Good afternoon and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, December 30th, 2020. Today is a special meeting that we just had to call on Monday. We are meeting today with Segal Reese, Dr. Galligan, and Jonathan Longley for the sole purpose of discussing a health update and unfortunately, some recent cases of in-school transmission that have come to light. So I am going to turn it over to Ms. Reese to get us started. So Ms. Reese, thank you for joining us again today.
Thank you, and sorry we had to get together and go over this, but I thought we'd start with, I'd just describe the two different scenarios that are going on. The first one, the simpler one, is that we had a positive student and we identified one of their teachers as a close contact, and then that teacher ended up converting to a case. That is the end of that cluster. It's just those two cases. We haven't seen anything really spread beyond that as far as any other close contacts converting. So at that point, that's just two people that are linked. And obviously, that transmission was in the school. That was at an elementary school. The second scenario is a little more complex. So it started out with one positive individual on a basketball team. We identified the whole team because of the nature of basketball as close contacts, the whole, all the individuals that were playing. Two of those individuals converted into cases, so that gave us, now we're up to three. And then within those households, we had siblings convert into two additional basketball teams. So that involved quarantining two other teams. So in the total, it was five cases, but three, three teams. The girls' team, boys JV, and boys varsity were all impacted with quarantines. The total of five cases associated with that group.
Thank you, Segal. Is there anything about either one of those sets of cases that you wanted to share at this time?
No, no, just understanding that it's five cases and a lot of people in quarantine because of, we take all the team, everybody that played that day of the exposure. It has to be contacted and, you know, identified as a close contact and placed into quarantine.
Okay. Are there questions from the committee on what Segal shared? Joan?
Are there other teams that are currently under quarantine that are not related to this? So do we have other potential spots that could pop up in the next week or two?
With high school sports?
Yes, alright, yeah, with high school sports.
Not that we know of.
Emery?
I mean, I think I know the answer to this, but for just the public, with the contact tracing, how confident are we with the elementary case that this, the teacher was actually infected by the student and not somewhere else externally?
And that's a great point. Actually, you never know 100%. When somebody is identified as a close contact, we, you know, that is a level of exposure that, you know, triggers that requirement. And then if they convert within a certain time period, you can assume. But you're right, we never know 100%.
Segal, are there other people in quarantine from the elementary case that with the timeline could still convert, or where are we in the timeline of exposure?
I think we've passed everybody's quarantine, pretty sure, because it was, it was some time ago.
Okay.
If not, we're very near the end, so I wouldn't expect anybody else to convert at this point.
Are there any other, I know Joan had asked about athletics, but just other cases in the school? I know that there's been a number of cases being reported in the community that are also students or staff in our schools, but are there other cases where we are at this time concerned they may convert and be in-school transmission from exposure that happened before the break?
They're actually, the same individuals associated with the basketball cluster, I believe one of them was in school during infectious period, two days before break. And we've contact traced there, so they have been people placed in quarantine. Let me look at my calendar. So we would still wait on those. We still don't know on those 100%, whether they are out of their quarantine or not. Some of them are still in quarantine.
Okay. Joan?
I don't know if there's an answer to this question, but I was wondering if you could give us a rough estimate of how many folks would be quarantined, I'm talking at the high school level. Every, so every time we have a case in the school, you quarantine the close contacts, right? In an average day, I know we've built protocols to reduce that. Are those close contacts people who, I don't want to say this in a negative way, but are those close contacts people who have been just going about their daily business in school and following all the protocols? Or are they people who caught a ride with a kid to school or something like that? Does that make sense, what my question is?
Yes, I think so. So, well, dealing with the school case or the basketball case?
I'm just asking for kind of a general, if so, let me, I'm just asking for a general average. So if a high school student converts and they're in school, are we then, is the close contact everybody in their cohort? Is their close contact everybody in one particular class because that class, you know, has to be squished together? Trying to get a sense of the averages of, of how many people end up quarantined every time we have a close contact in, every time we have a case in school during the infectious period?
Very, very few. So when we're talking about classroom activity, because of those safety standards and the social distancing and the mask wearing, very few close contacts identified from cases that are in school in their infectious period. And we've talked about this also many times here, that it's more likely actually that the student is not in school during their infectious period because of the hybrid model. But even the cases that are in school during their infectious period, very few close contacts identified with classroom activity.
Maia?
So following up on that, I mean, we obviously would have preferred that we never had a teacher who caught, you know, COVID from a student. And we've been trying to mitigate that risk as much as possible. So given the circumstances here, do we think that this is a sign that we should be instituting some additional protections, or do we think that this is a case where, for whatever reason, they weren't able to maintain the, obviously, if they were a close contact, they weren't maintaining the six-foot boundary. So I guess my, my question is, you know, is there something more that we should be doing to mitigate risk? I know we've been doing a lot, and so far, we've been successful, but now that we've had this, you know, I guess our mitigation strategies have sort of been breached. Like, we knew it was never going to be a perfect, you know, we can't reduce risk to zero. But is there something that we could be doing to reduce risk further, or do we think that this was just sort of an unusual set of circumstances?
You want to, you want to take that, Segal, or you want me to start, or you want to start?
Go ahead, you take it.
So there are some instances in our schools based on the nature of the service being provided, being a therapy, for instance, or working with a population that is not able to wear masks, an autistic student, where those protocols that we have are more difficult to follow. I'm not quite sure how we, you know, it comes into that conflict of how do you provide the service we're supposed to be providing while maintaining all of the protocols. And at some point in time, especially with the new, newer, I guess they're not new anymore, newer standard of being within six feet for 15 minutes cumulative over two days, that increases. So we've seen more staff become close contacts and exposed. Out of those 10 or so that we've had to quarantine, and we've been lucky in that they've been able to do their jobs from home in most cases, you know, we have one, one, one that has converted. So I think that's a pretty, those are pretty good odds based on, on what we're doing, but it's not perfect. You know, it's kind of like being a policeman or a fireman, you know, or a nurse. You know, you can do all the protocols, but there's still, there's still a little bit of risk involved there, which is why we do appreciate what our, what our teachers are doing every day. So, I don't know, Segal, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think that was great. I, I don't think there's much else we can do. I think there's circumstances, like we said, we can't be 100% at every moment, at every time. So I think the schools are doing a great job following the safety protocol as best as they can.
Yeah. We are, we are preparing to remind staff on the return about the six-foot distance and those things. It's going to become more important because the numbers around us are going up, you know, and that, that basically is, you know, is the problem. In the fall sports, we did not have any positive cases in any of our fall sports. But because there are more positive cases out there, they're going to break through the wall. And, you know, I will point out that this situation started prior to the season starting. And as soon as we found out, we, you know, isolated, quarantined those kids. And unfortunately, you know, they're, they're in households and, you know, I mean, I'll go back to my own quarantine, you know, small cape with one and a half baths, it's pretty hard to, it's pretty hard to stay separate from, from the rest of the family. So I fully understand that. But families have been great about notifying us so we can do that quickly. We need to remind families of the protocols and the charts and, and decision trees that we have, and ask families to really use those when we come back, or even now, they should be using them. And to be, and it's really important that people continue to be completely transparent and cooperative in this process because it increases our ability to quarantine and eliminate spread. And, you know, and that really has to continue. That's another message that's going to need to come out probably beginning of next week.
Joan?
Can I ask Mr. Longley a question? Mr. Longley, do you have, is there any guidance from the MIAA about what to do if there is inter-team transmission, again, for high school sports? I'm not sure if inter-team or intra-team. When one team is, can, is, there's transmission between members of the same team. Is there any guidance around that?
Give me your data, John.
The guidance that the MIAA follows is basically for schools to follow their local boards of health and school committees' policies. So essentially, you know, the MIAA gives out guidelines and recommendations, and they supply the sport modifications. But as far as, you know, your, your COVID protocols and things like that, that's, you know, turned back to the local boards of health and school committees' policies. So that's essentially what we've been following, is working closely with Segal and her team, and Jill Driscoll and her team, and trying the best we can to all communicate together and get information, receive information, and, you know, try and keep everybody as safe as we can.
Do you have a sense of what's happening with other teams in our league? So is there, is there concern that if, if we have a positive case or we have students who are still, is there a concern about, about towns coming together and playing games and potentially increasing the risk? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a risk, right? You know, participating in athletics is, is an added risk to any student or coach that, you know, makes the choice to, to participate. The MIAA and the EEA did not, you know, they still designate ice hockey and basketball as high risk, you know, with modifications, you know, that we're doing the best that we can, we can follow. There are other teams within the league that are quarantined, and, you know, we're prepared to, you know, we're all going into this understanding that, you know, both teams at some point could be quarantined because somebody was infectious during that time, and, you know, just do the best we can to do everything we can, we can do so far to try and prevent that. But, you know, at some point, you know, these things are unavoidable, as we've, as we've seen.
So where are we right now? We have three different basketball teams quarantined. I know the girls' team is getting closer to getting out of quarantine than the recent cases that have now happened with the boys' team. But games were supposed to start right after break, correct?
So the games are scheduled to start next week. Currently, as of today, the JV boys' basketball team and the varsity basketball team is quarantined. The girls would, as far as my understanding of it, essentially, their quarantine would be lifted as of today. So that's where we, we currently stand. So would be, after today would be JV boys' basketball and varsity boys' basketball that would be quarantined. And just so, I know we've gone over it before, but just for information for everybody, the teams are set up in pods, as you, as you, you know, may refer to them as 12 basketballers, 12-person rosters. They're not interscrimaging each other. So like a JV and a varsity or a freshman team, you know, if somebody was impacted on one of those teams, it essentially should, is set up to not impact the others. So, and, and we've seen that, you know, work, where typically you'd see a little bit more interaction between those teams that we've, you know, set up to, to prevent that this year. So, so currently, after today, it would be JV and varsity boys' basketball.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just, I just want to point out really quickly that, you know, we have paused, because, you know, we're talking initially, especially with the girls, because they didn't really even get through tryouts yet. So there was a large number, so we immediately have paused teams practicing and telling them to isolate while we finish the contact tracing. And that may become a reality as we go forward throughout the system, where we're going to, with the volume of cases that are coming through that need to be traced, where we might need to pause classrooms, we might need to pause grade levels, we might need to pause schools in order to allow the tracing to happen, because it's becoming labor-intensive at this point. So I just want to make that point.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Maia?
That was actually related to my question, which is, you know, a big part of the mitigation strategy is contact tracing in such a way that we can put people in quarantine and, and reduce further transmission. So I was going to ask, Segal, you know, at this point, are, is the contact tracing still, still, you know, reasonable? I like, I mean, I know you guys are incredibly busy. I don't mean to downplay that at all. But I understand that there are some places in the country where they've basically thrown up their hands and they can't do contract tracing. And so I'm just curious what you think in terms of what's going on in the Norbit schools. Is that contact tracing piece still in place and, you know, still part of the risk mitigation?
Yes, and I'll be honest, we focus probably 90% of our efforts on school cases. And we do send our overflow to the CTC, which has staffed up and is doing a better job responding to cases. They had a little lag time behind the surge to get them staffed up to follow up with cases, but we heard a report yesterday that they're sort of staffed to a number where they can handle those cases now. So we send most of our community cases to the CTC, and we focus on school cases. I'm not sure that's going to be sustainable much longer, to be honest. I think we're going to have to, you know, on the management side, look about how we can better do this, with the good news of, of our work now expanding to vaccinations. So that's, we will be reallocating resources towards vaccinations in the next coming weeks. So I think we need to evaluate how we're going to, how we're going to handle the school cases.
And building off of Maia's question, both first of all, and Dr. Thompson, just like our, our in-school team of nurses under Jill Driscoll, I know that they have, you know, obviously been doing a lot of the school and athletic-related contact tracing as well, and that they're managing it now, but that they're probably also close to the point that you're describing, Segal, where it might not be manageable. Is that accurate?
And I think, you know, I want to get into that whole discussion here, but part of the problem right now is we're doing double the work, because we're, we're tracing with one standard, and then the school nurses have to call with the second standard, with the difference in the quarantine issues. And I know that's a separate topic, but it does complicate this issue because we're doing double the work as a whole, all the nursing, nurses.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there other questions from the committee about either situation that we're talking through? Joan?
I don't know if I'm straying slightly off topic, but didn't the, didn't the standards end up aligning like 12 hours after we voted on it?
I think it was more like 24 or 18, but yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not on our agenda for right now, though, to talk about. Is it?
I mean, it's, it's not explicitly on the agenda, we said protocols, but I think it falls under why we're meeting today with the health update and the in-school transmission. So I think it is applicable. So we last met on the 16th, and at that time, the DESI guidance and the DPH guidance did not align. And then DESI updated their guidance late on the 17th, but they haven't dated the 16th, but it was not on the website on the 16th, just so everybody knows, multiple times. So if you look at the document, it says the 16th, but it wasn't uploaded or shared with anybody until the 17th on the website. But even Dr. Thompson as a superintendent didn't get it directly from Commissioner Riley until that Monday, that 2021st, whatever that Monday was.
Right, right. I actually, actually, Segal sent it to me prior to the Department of Ed sending it to me. So just to add, add to the frustration, unlike other changes that are, that are happening, when we're rolling from phase this to phase that, and there's a five-to-seven day window when these things are taking place, for some reason, schools do not seem to be given that option of knowing what the changes are before they're implemented and being able to react to them. So we are, we're cut between the news and the change, so.
Yeah. Joan?
So the, the standards now are aligned, right?
Yeah.
And DESI, so if we, if I make a motion, does that help reduce some of that workload if we're not contract tracing to two standards, or no?
I would turn that back to Segal and Dr. Thompson.
We, we can't change what we're doing. I think that's a Dr. Thompson. It's, it's more with, how the schools can, if they can do that. I'll let you take it.
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, the, again, the timing of this, you know, we, again, not having that window to get everybody up to speed has not, has not helped us. You know, in the MOU, it says we'll follow the, the Department of Health guidelines, but there's a whole lot of conversation that was around that in the MOU, and we've only had one meeting to re-engage in those conversations. We have another conversation, meeting with the union leadership on Monday the 4th to, to come back around to this topic. But technically, the MOU says that we'll follow the DPH guidelines. We voted last time to follow the DESI ones because they were more strict. They have now changed, but that's kind of the backstory on that. So, you know, and again, you know, this is the, you know, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing problem. The, you know, the, the changes in how we're operating are happening faster than people can fully digest them. But it is definitely a bump in the road where we're having to explain two sets of rules at this point in time. We are not in alignment with the CDC and the, and the, and the Department of Health. And actually, doctors are, are using the CDC and the, and the DPH guidelines, and the schools are not. So it is not, definitely not a comfortable position to be in. But again, it's about time, and, you know, it probably could have happened faster if we weren't taking this winter break. But I, for one, definitely needed a winter break, but it's not, that's not helping us in that aspect either, so.
Joan, did you have a follow-up?
So I'm just going to make the motion that we no longer follow the outdated DESI guidelines, and we follow the mass DPH guidelines.
Is there a second on that motion?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a discussion? Maia?
Um, I'd like to propose a slight amendment to that motion to authorize Dr. Thompson to, to update our guidelines in compliance with the, the new standards when the district is ready to do that compliance, because I do know that we, as Dr. Thompson said, there isn't, there hasn't been notice, there hasn't been, you know, and, and this, a change like this would require communicating with the union and communicating with the, with the, the nurses and things like that to, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And so I definitely am uncomfortable with the idea that we're now out of compliance with either of the standards that we said we were going to be in compliance with. So I'm not, I don't want to stick with the status quo, but I also want to respect what Dr. Thompson is saying about, like, let's have a conversation and make sure that everybody's on the same page. And it's really tough to do that, like, in this week between Christmas and New Year's. But I also don't want it to wait until we meet again on January 13th.
Joan?
So I'd like to paraphrase that amendment as, as the, the motion would be to bring us in line with the mass DPH pending, and now I was just going to paraphrase it and I lost it, but something along the lines of, at Dr. Thompson's discretion, when, as most efficient and feasible for the district. I accept that amendment. That's an acceptable paraphrase.
Do you need a second on that amendment?
So I will second it, and, yeah.
All right. So goodbye, Maia, and then Dave, what were you saying?
I was just saying, I told us something in mind, we do have to check with everybody involved, you know, so that, that should be first on the priority list. So this is a good amendment to the amendment.
Yeah. I just don't want to hold up until another school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, that passes 5-0. So I think the, you know, part of the reason we called this meeting is there's two potential discussion points, decision points ahead of the school committee. So just as a reminder to everybody, you know, with all the protocols, with the DESI documents, with what Governor Baker has said, with what the MIAA has said, there's really two areas of authority under the school committee related to the discussion today. The first, going back to the protocols that we created with Segal and Dr. Thompson around, you know, when do you pivot remote? If there are cases of in-school transmission in more than one school, which we have now had, that's been through the school committee for a discussion around, do we stay with our current model or pivot? So that's one thing potentially ahead of us today. And then the second is around athletics, given what has transpired over the last week. Do we continue to run when our athletics? Maia?
So I'd like to discuss the, the school model first. I would say that I think that in general, our mitigation strategies have been working. I know we've been, we know that there's trouble coming with contact tracing, but at the moment, we're keeping up. And I do think that there's huge benefits to having the students in school, at least at a hybrid level. So I would not recommend that we change anything there.
Yeah. And, and Segal, from a health department perspective, what is your recommendation with our current model and the need or not to pivot remotely?
Yeah, I would agree with what was just said. I don't think there's any need. I don't see any higher risk than, than last week.
Okay. Emery?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, following up on that too, you know, one case in the classrooms, and then these, these cases always serve to re-convigorate the carefulness and, you know, making sure that you're following things to the, to the letter that you started doing in September. You know, we all know that we were following, you know, guidelines, but things, you fatigue, you start to slip a little bit, everything's going so well. And hopefully, this one case really, you know, serves as a reminder of just how important it is to follow those guidelines to the letter.
Any other feedback on the school model, Joan?
Apparently, I'm all about making motions today. I was going to make a motion that we, that the district stay in its current model pending any additional, I'm going to say, in-classroom transmission. So in-school transmission during the school day transmission.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maia. Further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, it's 5-0. So I do, I do want to talk through a little bit, because we aren't scheduled again to meet until January 13th. Obviously, if we need to meet before then, we will make it work, as we are doing today. And I think, you know, having a break right now is, is helpful in terms of all the timing of how transmission could unfold. But in the event when we return, you know, our hybrid kids in person to school next week, if other cases of in-school transmission occur before we're scheduled to meet on January 13th? the school committee want to reconvene before or address whatever is going on at our January thirteenth meeting? Anne-Marie?
So I have a sneaking suspicion that we may end up having to meet before the thirteenth. Kind of curious, Segal, what you might think about, um, what families traveling over the holidays might do to cases that are, may not necessarily be telling people that they're traveling. I know, full disclosure, I traveled. I filled out my mass travel form when I got home. My whole family did. They tested negative. Um, we were, I was quarantined in my home until I got the negative test, followed the guidelines to the letter. But there are a lot of people who are not telling people they're traveling out of state for holidays because of the stigma that that is going to bring. My school nurse knows my son traveled, so she's very aware. But I'm, I'm really concerned about these families that are gonna be traveling and not telling anybody they went anywhere and just showing up to school on the fourth, and what that might do to any increase in cases. So I, I do have a sneaking suspicion that we'll be needing for the thirteenth to address some of these post-holiday transmissions or cases that are gonna start cropping.
So I think there's the travel and then there's the two holidays, too. So between Christmas and New Year's and, and the idea of, um, people are gonna gather, which just want to remind her that they shouldn't, you should celebrate with just your household. Unfortunately, we saw a little spike after Thanksgiving. Just throw it in there. This week's report is gonna be a little, our number's a little lower than last week. So that's the first time in a long time that our numbers decreased a little. We would still be in red with our percent positive. But, um, I think we might see an increase in cases, which doesn't mean we'll see an increase in transmission. And that goes to what we were talking about earlier, um, being very vigilant with those safety standards. There, you know, it's not a hundred percent, and there might be a few cases here and there. But between the hybrid model and the safety standards, I don't expect to see a huge spike in transmission in the buildings. We might see an increase in cases, um, as we're seeing across the board, but I don't expect an increase in transmission.
What are, is everyone else's thoughts on if in-school transmission does arise before January thirteenth? Just wait to discuss it as a committee on the thirteenth? Because again, as a reminder, what our protocols currently say is that there's in-school transmission in more than one school. That's when it rises to us. If it's just within one school, that's under the purview of Dr. Thompson in consultation with, um, with Ms. Reese. I'm just looking for direction from the committee. If you want me to try to schedule another meeting if we need to or wait till the thirteenth. Um, Maev?
Um, I have confidence that Dr. Thompson and Ms. working very closely together and, um, and, and working with Jill Driscoll and aware of what's going on in the schools. And so I think that the school committee meeting every two weeks, um, should be sufficient unless one of them thinks that we need to act more quickly. But, um, I would think that if another case of in-school transmission happens, which I really hope it doesn't, that, um, we could wait, you know, as long as we're meeting in less than two weeks, then I think that that would be sufficient unless Dr. Thompson and Ms. Reese really think that we need to seriously think about shutting down the entire district or putting the entire district all remote, um, prior to our meeting.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Seems reasonable.
Dave, okay. All right. So then the other question before us just goes back to, uh, winter athletics. And just given the recent transmission of, um, some cases, uh, related to basketball, if we are still comfortable with winter sports at this time?
Can, can we maybe, uh, clarify that we think that there might be one or two, two transmissions in one of the, one of the teams? The others are positive cases that have caused quarantine. And those positive cases came from within the home. And I'll also point out just real quickly that though that, those positive cases started before the season started. So this is the ripple of after. And, you know, these, these people were infectious as, as trials were starting or even before trials were starting. Not necessarily. So we're dealing with that scenario that started before the season started. So I just want to be clear on that. We've had, you know, one set of, of transmissions, so in one sport.
Joan?
I, I would just like to hear Segal's perspective on winter sports.
Yeah, I think it's, it's really tough. It's that risk analysis that we're always doing. I think we have the ability to pause it when we need to, and that's what we did with all three of these teams. We sort of, um, we identified the cases, sort of paused the practice, was able to contact trace, pause it until some, most of the quarantines are over, until all the quarantines are over with the, with the girls' basketball team. So as long as we have the ability to do that, I'd say we're not at that point yet. I think it's something that we are gonna be constantly evaluating, though.
Yeah, and, and I'll, if I can just chime in, Madam Chair, you know, I, I think we may reach you know, a tipping point of too many cases to trace at one time, and we might have to do multiple pauses or an entire pause. But, you know, again, erring on the side of caution, if we can't trace and isolate, you know, we need to stop until we're in that position. And that's, that's what we've done. So.
Anne-Marie?
This is a really minor point. But how, you know, given the contact, given that most of these teams are very tight, you know, they tend to hang out a lot after practicing, like, how confident are we that they actually transmitted during the, um, actual um, extension of the sport and not in a social group separately? So I'm just, you know, I know it sounds minor, but I'm also concerned about, you know, lumping that this was a in-sport transmission when it may have possibly been outside of that, because these teams tend to be like big little families.
I think that's a great point. Can I just add that? I, I think there's some evidence that two of the individuals might have been exposed to a different cluster in a, a different sport area. And that, like Dr. Thompson said, uh, two of the five cases were household exposures. They just led to quarantine of other teams. So it is, it's a combination, to be honest. And we don't, again, we never know for sure exactly where you got it, but we know where you were exposed, and there might be several exposures.
I think that's kind of the point, too. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, it's, people are thinking, oh, it was the basketball team, you know? Sports are a bad thing, you know, you get these kids together on a court and this is what happens. And it might not have actually happened that way. And, you know, I think that's important for the, um, you know, the parents and the public to understand that this might not just be from them getting together and trying to battle for a ball. This could have hap, you know, it could have happened in a number of ways, but it happened to quarantine.
Maev?
I think that there's, um, you know, we know that, that these sports, these indoor sports are, you know, increasing the risk for those student athletes who are choosing to participate. But I do think that families went into this season with that understanding. I think people knew that we were going to do what we could to mitigate according to the MIAA guidance, but that, um, you know, they were kind of taking on some risk, and I think the coaches were aware of that as well. And, um, so I kind of feel like as long as the state as a whole is allowing these activities to go on, because they're going on not just through schools, but also recreational basketball, recreational hockey, those things are going on. I don't know that we need to shut down our own program unless we think that it's increasing the risk in our school buildings in general. But I think that it's sort of fortunate that this is only hap, you know, we only have sports at the high school. And at the high school, these students are only, even the students who are remote, I mean, or are hybrid, are only in school basically eight hours a week. They don't eat any meals there. It's not like the elementary school and the middle school where they're coming in and they're eating lunch and things like that. You know, these students come in, they sit six feet apart from one another, they go to four classes, and then they go home. And so I think that in terms of the way we've structured things at the high school, we have seen that when there have been students who were in their infectious period while they were in school, oftentimes, they had no close contacts, um, because those protocols are in place. So I feel like the, although the student athletes are taking on a little bit of an increased risk because they clearly want to play these sports, I don't think that it's creating an unreasonable risk for the students and staff in the high school building.
Can I ask, John and Hugh, what are you hearing, um, with other districts, you know, in the Tri-Valley, but also just in general? You know, there's a couple listservs, you know, that I'm on, that I think Joan is on as well through the MASC, so we hear and see some of the chatter, you know, from other school committees. And I think some have canceled winter sports. Like, I know Hall canceled all of their winter sports even before break. Um, and I think other committees are kind of struggling with this question. And I think basketball is kind of like the hot topic sport right now, just with the nature of basketball. Um, but, but what are you hearing from fellow ladies and, and principals?
I think right now, in the, in the Tri-Valley League, originally Holliston and Ashland a couple of weeks ago put a, a halt to winter sports and, um, went full remote, at least Ashland went full remote at Ashland High School. Uh, the athletic director from Ashland actually just let us know the other day that they've actually, they're planning on actually returning to school after the break and resuming, uh, winter sports. So, so right now, it looks like in the league, um, only Holliston is, uh, not participating in winter sports right now. But all the other schools are. Now, there are, you know, there are, just like us in Norwood, there are specific teams that are quarantined because of cases that come up. And, you know, that's gonna happen throughout, throughout the winter. So there could be, you know, makeup games, postponements, team quarantines, and, you know, we'll continue to work through those. But as of right now, everyone except for Holliston, um, is is actively participating and prepared to start, uh, games next week, so.
Is that the recommendation of Mr. Longley and, and Dr. Thompson at this time to continue with our winter sports?
Yes, I don't, I mean, you know, we're talking about one, one transmission that could quite possibly have happened prior to the season even starting. We're only talking about one particular sport. I think closing down all sports for all the kids is a little, little premature at this point. Doesn't mean it won't be a consideration going forward. Doesn't mean we're not gonna get a tipping point where we're not able to trace fast enough and we need to pause everybody. But we'll make that call. I don't, I just don't think we're there at that point yet. When we are, we'll make that call.
Segal, can I ask what you're seeing at the, the youth level, the rec level with basketball? Is there also a significant amount of contact tracing and cases going on at that level?
I don't know of any clusters associated with rec basketball. I know we do have another hockey group, another time hockey cluster. But at this point, I don't believe we have any other basketball clusters.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking through the actual sport and the way you play when you're nine is very different than the way that you play when you're in high school. And I mean, even the rules at the, you know, Norwood Basketball Association, you're not playing man-to-man. They don't let you pass the, you know, the foul line to like guard other people. It's just a very different way that you play um, in the youth. So I was just wondering what we were seeing at different levels. Joan?
Segal, can you talk a little bit about how quickly you get notified? So I know there was a delay in one of the notifications, but that was because the person lived in a different town. So that was the, the teacher. The teacher transmission, how quickly? So, okay, so here's where I'm at. My, my main concern is, is Maev's point. If we increase, if, if winter sports potentially increases transmission, then we're increasing the number of cases in our schools, which is gonna increase the, the possibility of in-school transmission even through our protocols. Student athletes take that risk. Regular students do not take that risk. Staff do not take that risk. So my concern is, and right now, what we've been experiencing, what we just experienced all happened over break, right? So there is no opportunity for in-school transmission. So my question is really about how quickly are you notified? And how likely is it that if there is additional increases in transmission, that you're gonna get those notifications in enough time to be able to quarantine effectively? Given that it seems like the approach has been to quarantine the whole team if there's one positive case, right, which I'm not disputing that. I'm just asking. That spread, that, that spreads potential close contacts across a huge swath of the school, right? So how quickly do you get that notification and can turn it around to a quarantine?
Sure. So very, we're back up and running with testing. So there's been highs and lows with testing and delays. I feel like testing is, is back up and running and we're getting cases, you know, results within one to two days. So that's good. So that helps our notification. Some of these cases, what you'll see is someone becomes symptomatic on the twenty-third, they get tested on the twenty-six, three days later, because, you know, it may have just been sniffles. And so you're getting the results on the, you know, a couple of days later. So you're already almost a week into it, and you have to go two days before they start to have symptoms. So it's always a little bit of a catch-up when you're doing contact tracing. You know, and we always encourage, that's why we keep putting the mantra, you have any symptoms, go get tested, even if they're mild, because then we can identify that case earlier. I would say because testing has caught up, we are pretty good with the notification. You know, with understanding that it's never within a day or two, it's usually more like four or five days that we're looking back.
So when you say testing is caught up, is that both the antigen and the PCR or just the antigen?
Oh, PCR.
PCR test, okay.
For sure.
Okay. Other questions or comments at this time around winter athletics? Okay. Just one thing, at the last meeting, we voted that if, um, there was a need to pivot the high school remote because of staffing between now, well, our last meeting and, um, the January thirteenth meeting, we had given, um, the permission that winter athletics could continue if we needed to pivot to remote because of staffing as long as there was no in-school transmission. That was the vote that we took. And I'm not clear, and I just want to make sure we're all clear. Are we defining in-school transmission the same way? Or not? Are we including what happens on a court through the school system as in-school transmission? I mean, you have to report them as in-school transmission to DSC, right, Dr. Thompson?
Uh, well, we, we, yeah. Well, that's a good question. I did call the DESC this morning, and I'm still waiting to get a phone call back, so. You know, and I told him I needed to know before noon, so I'll probably know tomorrow by noon.
I mean, Segal, how are you looking at the athletic situations? Is that in-school transmission as, as your definition entails?
Well, we definitely, we, we had the same question. And I think we've, we've sort of separated here a little in our discussion, and I think that makes sense. Obviously, we need to hear what, what DSC thinks as that agency, but from my standpoint, it's just a, it's, it's a different beast. And I think we should handle it on almost a separate track, where we look at athletics over here and then the school activity over here, because we're seeing so much less transmission in classroom school. And we know that certain sports are just in, by nature, higher risk. So I feel like they're two different animals and we should treat them differently.
What does the committee think about that? Dave?
I would agree with Segal. You know, it's, it's one thing when we have, uh, you know, potentially a classroom with a bunch of people getting infected versus an athletic team, you know, which, that, that, it seems very separate to me. So I think that we shouldn't exclude athletics if it's, you know, they're, they're pretty much separate, even though it's in-school, yes, but they're very separate, I think.
Any other thoughts on this? So with the vote that we took last time, just trying to think through what could unfold before January thirteenth and have somewhat of a game plan, so we don't have to meet unnecessarily. If for some reason, post-break, Dr. Thompson needs to pivot the high school because of staffing issues, and there is further transmission on a athletic team, are we, as a committee, still saying we are continuing winter sports as we voted on on December sixteenth? Joan?
I think we should separate the two. A, a high school pivoting to remote for staffing issues is separate from, um, transmit, winter sport transmission.
Well, it is, but it's not, because if a high school pivots remote for any reason, the decision to continue the athletics is at the local level.
I agree that it's within our jurisdiction, but I'm making, I guess I'm, again, I'm all about motions today, apparently. I am making the motion that if the high school pivots to remote for staffing reasons, that
that winter athletics is allowed to continue without school committee approval. We give, what are we doing? We approve winter athletics to continue.
I, I'm just clarifying from the last thing, because we had last time said unless there was in-school transmission.
Yeah, I'm superseding that motion. I'm making a new motion to make that outdated. And maybe if we don't speak at this time, it won't happen, because last time we put it in the motion. Yeah, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make a motion that if the high school pivots to remote for staffing reasons, that winter athletics is not, that was the spirit of the original motion, that winter athletics is not impacted by that. And then I think after this motion and vote, we should discuss if we need to come back together again, if there's multiple transmissions within winter athletics, but I think that's a separate issue.
Okay, so just repeat.
Yeah, you want me to paraphrase my, my motion? That if the high school pivots to remote for staffing issues, winter athletics may continue.
Is there a second on that?
Second?
Thank you, Emery. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay. And then are you going somewhere else, John, with the second motion?
No, I don't, I don't have, I don't have real thoughts. I think it's just a separate discussion about whether or not we need to come back together again if there is multiple, if there is additional transmission between athletes.
So Maev, you were saying earlier that if there was additional in-school transmission at more than one school before the 13th, oops, sorry, hitting my table, my computer's on, that we would trust Dr. Thompson in consultation with Ms. Reese to make those decisions and then we would address it on the 13th. Is everybody comfortable with that carrying over to athletics as well? John?
And, and can you repeat? I'm not quite sure I understand then.
Yeah, it wasn't a formal motion, so maybe we need to make it one now, but earlier, Maev was saying that if there is in-school transmission in the classroom, in the, you know, physical school building, in more than one school, which our current protocol says is elevated to a school committee, but if that happens again before our meeting on January 13th, we would not meet earlier. We would trust Dr. Thompson to work with Segal on that unless it was at a point that Segal felt we, we needed to reconvene. John?
So I guess the part that I'm getting hung up on is, is that giving Segal, is that delegating the authority to pivot the entire system to Segal and Dr. Thompson? That's the question I have about that motion.
Maev?
I thought it was kind of letting them make the decision not to pivot, but that if they felt it was necessary to pivot, then they would need our vote to do that. So then they would be authorized to call the meeting. Well, I mean, technically Teresa has to call the meeting, but we would be, but like, we were kind of leaving it to their discretion whether or not it could wait until the 13th. But I believe that if we want to pivot the whole district remote, then I do think that has to be a school committee vote.
So we would, we would reconvene on the recommendation of Dr. Thompson and Segal?
Yes, that was what I was thinking.
To pivot, okay. Sorry, it just wasn't clear to me before.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Yeah, I'm just looking for guidance from everybody on when I'm, you know, texting y'all like I did on Monday, if we need to meet or, or not. But Maev, do you want to formalize that as a motion?
So I would say that we sort of, I guess, make a slight amendment to our protocols and say that if there is, if we see multiple school-related transmissions, that we, it would be discussed at our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting unless Dr. Thompson and/or Ms. Reese felt that we needed to meet and discuss it sooner.
Is there a second on that motion?
We'll second it.
Thank you, Dave. Discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, five zero. Does that make sense, Segal and Dr. Thompson? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So is there anything else before us today related to the in-school transmission cases that anybody wanted to ask or discuss? John?
Where did we land with winter athletics and if there's more transmission between now and our next meeting? Can we, are we comfortable? Is that, because we, before we specifically separated winter athletics from in-school and now I think Maev's motion was squishing them back together again. I just want us to be clear if that, were we doing that?
What was your intent, Maev? Was it just the school or also the athletics?
My intent was that it was going to be both, that, I, I do think that, I imagine that Dr. Thompson and Ms. Reese will treat them as separate issues, because they do have, I think, different priorities and things like that. But I think we, I was intending that my motion would give them the authority to, you know, would say that unless they felt we needed to meet sooner, then us meeting every two weeks was sufficient.
So just to be, I'm sorry, just to be clear, that would be, we could be called back to talk specifically about winter athletics and not pivoting the whole district, or we could be called back to pivot the district and not. I can't imagine that we wouldn't talk about winter athletics if we're pivoting the whole district, but in theory it could, it could happen.
Right, yes. Everybody comfortable with that?
And sorry, just to add one, I think wrinkle into that, if the high school was pivoting to remote, then I think it would also ingest the high school, not for staff-related reasons, but because of any transmission of the school, then we would also have an athletics conversation, correct?
Correct. That's still my interpretation of the guidance. It'd be great if all of this was just in one, like playbook, you know, navigating a pandemic in an education system.
Is there literally anything that basketball can do, like are there better grades of masks? Is there literally anything we can do to, to help, to help reduce the chance of transmission? Because it is a high risk and so is hockey. Nothing? No? Okay. Sorry, I just thought I'd try again.
I mean, they have, I mean, they have changed some of the rules and some of the high contact, like underneath the basket plays and things along that line, but you know, there is, basketball is still basketball. There's still, you're still going to play offense and defense, you're still going to guard somebody. You know, I mean, the best thing players can do is to, is to limit their contact to their pod, to their team. Wear their masks all the time, stay more than six feet away from everybody else. I mean, if, if playing sports is important to you and to your team, then you really need to buy into the team and the pod. That's all you're socializing with, that's all you're in close contact with, except for mom, dad, the household, whatever that might look like. But any, you need to look at anybody out, outside of that pod as a risk, not only to the winter sports season, your participation in it, but basically the whole team. So I mean, talk about a team concept, you know, energized and maximized. This is, I mean, that's, you're going to have to commit yourself to the pod, to the team and, and that, in order for this to continue. Otherwise, it's going to be interrupted consistently and possibly stopped. You know, and it's not, but that means wearing masks in cars, that means socializing with your teammates and not with some of the other friends for the season. Literally, that's, that's what's going to need to happen. Otherwise, we're going to have to make a choice that, you know, and, you know, we talk about the whole child and educating the whole child, the four As here in Norwood. We understand the value of that. You know, the old term was extracurricular. We now look at it as co-curricular. These are part of developing our students into full human beings, be that art or music. The thespians are doing plays online. We've, we've had virtual performances for, we are looking at multiple ways to have our kids involved with the activities that they value and, you know, and help engage them in their learning. And those, those two things are not totally separate, all right? They're not totally separate. They interplay with the overall well-being of our students and them being able to perform in classrooms. But students, if you're out there listening and coaches, if you're listening, get the message out. You need to stay in your pod. You're not going to stay in your pod, we're not going to be able to do it. We want to, we want to do our best to make sure you can do it. I think Dr. Galgan is going to climb on that as well.
Yeah, I think what Dr. Thompson said is incredibly important. I do want to thank the committee for their, for their thoughtful discussion around this. It's incredibly important. And I do want to say, in addition to what Dr. Thompson said, and we'll be reiterating this to our student athletes in particular, it's incredibly important that they be fully upfront and honest with anything that they're experiencing. So if there's a minor symptom, you got to let us know, because the sooner we know about that, the sooner we can do what we need to do, keep it under control and you can get back to it, right? If things linger along, and that's not, I'm not saying that's the case in these cases, but if, if things linger along, that strings everything out even longer and can make it more complex and, and much more risky. And if athletics are what is driving you and your commitment to your team and in some cases to your education, then, then you need to keep that in mind, that that's part of it this year is being upfront about the way you feel, being upfront with your teammates and your coaches and your staff and saying, okay, we got to get this under control, we have to pause it and we've already seen now, we're, we're going to have to do that. But the sooner we can do that, the easier it is to contain and the sooner we can get back to, to practice and play. So I do want to, want to thank everyone for that and I think what's not lost on all of us is the incredible importance that all of the additional three As besides academics have on a student's mental health and their, and that that is a real, real concern. And when we have seen winter athletes who have started now and seen their spirits change from, you know, if they didn't participate in the fall and they now are, that, that has made a difference. And while their, you know, their physical safety is obviously our top priority in this moment, their social and emotional safety is incredibly important and can't be overlooked too. So I want to thank everyone for taking all of those things into consideration and we'll do absolutely the best we can and for as long as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Galgan. Any further comments from anybody today? All right. Well, it is 1:35 and at this time I think we can adjourn as there is a motion to do so.
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Emery, was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for making the time and space to be here today. I hope I do not have to see you again until January 13th. I will not jinx this time. So I will see you at the next school committee meeting on January 13th, but Happy New Year to everybody.
Yes, Happy, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Bye.